I'm ready.
Good evening, we'll call the meeting to order. It's Tuesday, May 9th of 2023. This is the Stoughton City Council and the first order of business is the roll call.
Okay. Legaki. Here. Mijaski.
Here.
Reeves.
Here.
Shurlucky.
Here.
Zbaker.
Here.
Raff. Caravello.
Here.
Hiley.
Here.
Hirsch.
Here.
Jensen. Do we have Alder Jensen there?
Here.
There we go. Okay, we have nine Alders present.
All right, thank you Candy. We are certified of compliance with open meeting laws. So the next item on the agenda would be the public comment period. We have three people signed up to speak and the first one is Michael Engelberger. You know the rules, right? Okay.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and council members. Mike Engelberger, I'm 1101 Guile Street, also a member of the Dane County Board, District 35, representing this area. I'd like to speak tonight on advising or recommending that you approve ordinance 13 2023, which is the historic district, historic landmarks district for downtown. And I've served on the council here for a while, also served on landmarks. I also was a member of the Landmarks Commission up in Fitchburg when I lived up there a long time ago. But I just wanted to say a couple of things about this. There's continuity with, between the Plan Commission and Landmarks Commission. It's staffed by Michael from the Planning Department and he staffs both committees, both commissions. So there's really not any, you know, big differences there. As far as, I just feel it's a win-win situation. The, it's a win-win for the community and for, for building owners. The state offers and the federal and state credits add up to 20% each, so it's 40%. And that's on any exterior remodeling as well as interior, which would include the HVAC plumbing and electrical, huge items for, especially for commercial buildings. I've done it on my house. The law is a little bit different for residential, but commercial, it's 40%. And, you know, any building owner that does want to take advantage of that, I gotta wonder why. There really is no downside to this, so I just would encourage that, that you approve this, this ordinance and, you know, keep Stoughton the historic place that it is. It's got one of the nicest downtown historic districts in the area and we need to keep it that way, so I would encourage you to approve that. Thank you.
Thank you. Next up is Joseph Kabiebo.
Good evening. My name is Joel Kabiebo. I live across the street, 404 South Fifth Street in a historic building. And I'm here to support the downtown historic district that is proposed. I'm not going to repeat all the things I did last time about how great the Landmark Commission is, I think everybody knows that. I'm here to basically make two points. At the last meeting, I think there were six people who spoke in favor of the Landmark Commission and one person who spoke against it. I think that says a lot. The people who came and spoke said what they believed in favor or opposed, but the majority of them and not all of them were on the Landmark Commission. Most of them had been on the Landmark Commission like myself. And I think that says something about the, the feeling of the people who have done the work and whether or not it's valuable work. The second reason is you have an opportunity to make it easier for owners of property in the proposed district to get the credits. Yes, they can get it if there's no downtown district established, but it's harder. It's another step. It's another hoop to jump through. We have people with expertise who can make it easier for them in the very, in the application process, in the discussion of what they're going to do. They can be instructed and helped and that makes all the difference in the world, especially if you have an owner who has not done this before. So you can either put roadblocks up to people trying to do it, or not necessarily roadblocks, but at least not make it easier for them, or you can make it easier for them. Why would you not make it easier for them? I think this is an opportunity that you should not pass up. And I think the only reason you would pass it up is because it's something new. Traditionally, it's been Planning Commission and change is difficult for some people, but I think this is a logical change. It's an obvious change. It's a change that just plain makes sense. And I hope you all see that from the comments and the general support that you've heard. I don't know what you've heard, if anybody else has come forward against this, but everything I've heard from people I've talked to around town are in favor of it and I hope you are. Thank you.
And next is Tyler.
Ahoy. My name is Tyler Dennick and I'm just around the corner. I live at 409 South Fourth Street. Stoughton demonstrates a particular beauty that you cannot buy back once it's lost. It's lost forever. We can't go back in time and simply ask those fine Norwegian settlers to just build more buildings. And we can't wind back the clock tower of the Stoughton Opera House and change the decision that we make here tonight, where we, as a community, decide whether we will hold ourselves accountable for protecting the irreplaceable features that make Stoughton such a unique and wonderful place to be. I read the news for a living, that's what I tell people, and that includes sections on government and politics. And by no definition of my own would I ever consider what's happening here tonight as some gross overreach of the government hand. I would actually consider this to be a rather rare moment in politics where we have the opportunity to listen to the expert. The Landmarks Commission has zero financial or political incentive to add more responsibility, more work to their own plate by establishing an historic district. They're volunteers, they're not paid. They're just very well researched, very well studied in the challenging task of historic preservation. They are the ones in Stoughton that can do it. And this is the recommendation of those experts. There's no precedent suggesting that a community should suffer serious financial consequences as a result of establishing an historic district. And sure, it may not immediately enable landlords or building owners to extract profits from a community, but it does offer some significant long-term protections for our very lucrative tourism industry. It encourages residents to get downtown and support local businesses that are housed in these beautiful historic structures. It increases property values and it attracts new residents and new money to an area that is ripe and rich in history and culture. Right? Stones are community. So whether you just moved here or whether you've owned a few buildings downtown for a decade, or whether you've lived here since before these buildings were considered historic, we have an obligation to our community. Right? So that's why I stand here and provide my comments in support of a downtown historic district. I want to protect the unique features, the irreplaceable features that make Stoughton such a wonderful place to be. Thank you.
Thank you. And that's all we had, signed up for public comment tonight. Next item on the agenda is the communications and presentations. Are there any communications from Alders?
Here.
President Hirsch.
Getting used to these new mic things. Later tonight or in a few minutes, Attorney Dregney is going to talk to us all about kind of procedures for being on city council and ethics and walking quorums and all those fun things. But I also thought it was a good time for all of us to be reminded of a couple, ordinance that we passed in 2016, which is our anti-bullying, anti-harassment ordinance. And so, and, and I don't know if the new council members realize that we actually passed that in 2016, but it's ordinance number 23 of 2016 or the municipal code number 50-15. And this, this basically just says that, you know, bullying and harassment of an individual probably in our business is not to be tolerated, either from a child to another child or adult to adult. This applies to both. And I also want to kind of reach out to the community also is if you are experiencing being bullied or harassed, please to reach out to your teachers, a council member, and especially the police department. We really do want to stop this type of behavior in our community. I think everybody here on council, and I know the mayor and I have talked quite a bit, we really are trying to make this community an inclusive community, which means that we want everybody to feel welcome, no matter where they've come from, different countries, their sexual orientation, their gender identity or religion, your race, no matter what, we want everybody to feel welcome. And so I know we have a ways to go, but I think this is, this is a time to, for everybody to be aware of this ordinance and to start really thinking about how we, as a community, can be kinder to one another and be more inclusive. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any other communications from Alders?
Mayor Swadley?
Sure. Alder Legaki, go ahead.
President Hirsch, thank you for your attention to that important ordinance and all kinds of things can, can come under that and statements of hate are one of them. And so I just wanted to share, thank you so much for that. On Monday, May 22nd, the Undivided at the High School is sponsoring an International Cultural Day. It is set to start at 5:30, possibly using the gym, and it's meant to be a coming together by our high school students. I know I've changed my schedule to be there and so I'm hoping many folks want to be there. It is right after Setnamai weekend and so maybe celebration continue of all of our cultures. And then timely, very timely, and the library has actually decided to try to make there and my dog is in on this too, he's going to come. He is allowed in East Park. On Saturday, June 3rd, from 10 to 4, the library is holding the first Stoughton Pride celebration. And even before certain events, they had timely, timely issues on the agenda. And so I plan to be there in the afternoon. I'm hoping anybody who is interested in the support, this is a first event and I'm so pleased that it is coming from our library and with the support of the Friends of the Library and the support of all kinds of other folks as well. Thank you very much for all those statements.
Thank you. Jean, can you repeat the dates for us, please?
Yes. Monday, May 22nd is the International Cultural Celebration by the Undivided. It's at the High School. Saturday, June 3rd is the Pride Celebration in East Side Park. The times are Monday evening, 5:30 to 7:30 for the Undivided and Pride is 10 to 4 at East Side Park. And there will be no rain.
Thank you. Are there any other communications from Alders? Alder Person Hiley? Nope, guess not.
I didn't, I didn't have anything.
Sorry. Okay, any other communications? Okay, hearing none. We do have a couple of presentations and the first one is an update on our volunteer income tax assistance program. And this was a program, I kind of tell the story that when I first decided to run for mayor, I went around the neighborhood and first store I went to, the gentleman there said, whatever you do if you get elected is to bring back the VITA, the volunteer income tax. And I'm happy to say we were able to do that. We had it here for many years, multiple locations, including this room at one point. Kind of bounced around, went to Oregon. They happened to be looking for a place and we've been able to secure a location here the last few years, so I'm, I'm pleased about that. So I think Director Elinger has an update on the VITA that he'd like to share with us tonight. Try to queue it up for you here.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. For those of you who are not aware, I'm one of the site coordinators of the Stoughton Vita Site. I was trying to find the history. I found my 2012 return that I was shredding the other day and it had the Stoughton Vita site on it, so we've been here at least a decade now. We're very appreciative of having the site. We definitely want to help out people. We had a very good year last year. Overall, I did, we did 15% more in returns and for those individuals who had a Stoughton mailing address, we actually did 35% more returns than we did the prior year. So very good thing. We put about $350,000 back into the pockets of people and don't charge them a dollar for it. So very good program. We're looking at it for next year. I've got some ideas of how to improve things, but again, we just wanted to thank everybody for allowing us to have the Vita site here. We appreciate it.
Now, just to add, we obviously appreciate your help and the volunteers and then Cindy at the Senior Center for offering up the space. Any questions for Dave about the program? Okay, hearing none. The next communication is the WIDA Tax Credit Award and I believe Dave's going to do this one too, if I can find it.
Yep, and it's basically, if you hadn't heard, WIDA did give the project at the Stoughton Housing Authority the tax credits that we applied for, so we're going to be starting that process to go through it. When it's all said and done, we're going to have over $8 million in renovations to the apartments and common areas and roofs, so some much needed repairs on the remaining 73 units. So we'll have some more work to do, but it's a good start and hopefully everything goes smoothly.
And once again, I'd like to recognize Dave for his leadership on this one as well as the Housing Authority Committee members. We had multiple meetings in a short line, in a short time to get to the finish line and certainly Attorney Dregney had a big role in that as well, so we appreciate your help. All right. Communications from myself. In the packet, you'll see a number of proclamations. This week is Public Servant Week, so we honor all our public employees here in the city of Stoughton. Last week was Clerks Week. Upcoming, we have Police Week, EMS Week, Public Works Week, as well as Setnamai. So there's a number of proclamations in the packet. I've also been issuing proclamations for the anniversary for the Vietnam era veterans, including the VFW, the American Legion, and I'll be going to Skollin Home on Thursday as well. So getting to be spring, spring gets busy, but it's, it's all good. So a lot of great things going on and also it's a week to, you know, recognize teachers as well. Having said all that, Attorney Dregney has a presentation on open meeting laws review and I'm not sure if you want any graphics or if you just want to kind of go through what you have or...
I don't, I don't need you to pull it up.
Okay.
Just verbally and...
Push your button.
There you go. I already forgot to use the new stuff.
See, I trained you too.
Okay.
Not very well, apparently.
Sorry. So I don't, I don't need any, anything pulled up personally. If, if any, I, the packet did include a copy of an outline that I will be following tonight and I'll, I'll note that attached to the outline are some helpful reference materials for anyone who's interested in digging a little more deeply into any of the topics I'll be covering tonight. My intent is to talk about the open meetings law, about ethics, and perhaps a little bit about parliamentary procedure. I apologize in advance that this is a little dry. I think Alder Mijaski, I think made the comment that this was a little bit like watching paint dry, I think, or something like that, the last time I did this presentation. My mom claims that watching baseball is like watching paint dry. They did change the rules, it's more exciting now, I'll see what I can do here. And I'll try and keep this moving. So let's start with the open meetings law. You know, the point behind the open meetings law is to make sure that when you all are doing your work as elected officials, you're doing it in a context where the public has access to what's happening and has the ability to follow what its government is doing. So meetings are conducted in public, we have notices that go out before the meetings that tell people what the agenda will be for the meeting, so no one, so everyone can follow what, what its city government is doing. And so that's why we have this law, to make sure that, that that's what, how it works. You, you really need to be concerned frankly, you only need to be concerned about the open meetings law from my standpoint, when you're having conversations outside the context of a regular noticed meeting. That's when you have to ask, you know, am I crossing the line here and having what the law calls an unlawful meeting? So how do you, and this, this does apply to not only the city council, but it applies to the Plan Commission and to all city committees. So if you're on a committee, you have to, have to be aware. If you're speaking with another person or a group of people who serve on that committee, you have to think about whether or not you're doing so in a way that is crossing the line. Are you doing it outside of a regular noticed committee meeting? And if so, you have to ask whether you're violating the law or not. So when would you be crossing the line? The courts have established essentially a two-part test that governs that and I call it the numbers test and the purpose test. The numbers part, the numbers part of the test asks whether the number of people involved in this, in, in the conversation or the, the dialogue would be sufficient to determine the, the course of action that the body might be, that might be taking on that topic. So if it's a smaller group, which is a smaller committee, like a five-person committee, you know, if you have all five people at, at the meeting, it takes, it takes three people to, to either approve something or prevent something from being approved. But actually, the number can even be smaller than that because, you know, to have a quorum, you, and you could have a meeting with less than all members present. So the numbers can get a little tricky. So, you know, if you find yourself having a conversation with one other person, that tends not to be a problem, but once you expand the conversation beyond that, you have to ask, are there enough of us where we could influence or have an effect on the outcome of this, either at committee meeting if we're committee members or at council meeting if, if you're discussing it with other council members? So that's the numbers test. The purpose test is whether or not what you're discussing together, you know, is governmental business. If, if it's not about your work as, as an official for the city, if it's about social matter or something that has nothing to do with city business, you, you're okay, you're not doing city business and that's fine. It's really only a concern if you're talking about something that is coming before the city or is before the city or a committee. So those are the two things you have to ask yourself, you know, how many people am I engaged in this conversation with and what are we talking about? And if you, if you're violating that test, you need to say, look, we, we have to do this during a noticed meeting. There are a few other things that I'll just mention on this topic that, that you should be aware of. So there's something called a walking quorum. So that happens when, you know, you have a series, there are a series of discussions that take place, not all at once, but you know, if you talk to one person and then another person and then another person, all about this item of governmental, an item of governmental business, you know, that, that can lead to a meeting where if you have enough people involved ultimately in that series of discussions, if you, if you hit the numbers test and you're talking about something that is a matter of city business, then that can be an unlawful meeting with what we call a walking quorum. I'll mention some other examples. You know, these, you can also have situations where you and maybe other members of a committee or the council will choose to attend another organization's event or, well, that's, that's kind of the best example. And so it's not your meeting per se, someone else is having a meeting, but you're, but if it, if they're discussing something that is a matter of concern to the city, that the city may be involved with in one way or another, and we have enough people from the city council or a committee, for example, that choose to attend that, we need to notice that correctly. And so we need to make sure that Candy, basically the city clerk, is made aware that, well, we may have essentially enough people from either the city council or the Plan Commission or whatever, attending this other function, so we need to give notice of that. So the public knows that we're going to be there, potentially gathering information or engaging in a dialogue about something that will be coming before the city. It's called a, a bad key notice and Candy knows how to do it, we've done it before and we'll do it again, we'll give the notice. Just be aware that those kinds of meetings that other organizations or groups are having, if, if enough of us are going to be there, that can trigger an obligation to give notice of that fact. Another thing to be concerned about is email, this can be tricky. We don't have a definitive, say, decision from the courts telling us exactly how email would be analyzed. The best that I can do is kind of tell you what the Attorney General's Office is saying about email is that, you know, courts are likely to consider, you know, how many people are involved in this email communication, the number of the communications and the extent to which the email communications look like, you know, a, a conversation among the members that are involved. So, you know, if, if one person on the council sends an email to all the other council members about something and no one replies to, to that older person, chances are that's not a meeting, but we still discourage it. It's best practice to not attempt to engage in communication with your colleagues on the council about substantive issues, you know, by email. Sometimes there's a need to send out an email to say, you know, we need to schedule a meeting, I'm proposing this date, please let me know your availability. I'm not concerned about that, I don't think anyone is concerned about that. And then once the meeting date is selected, then notice of the meeting is given and, and so on. But do be cautious with email and of course, that includes text communications as well. But do be cautious with email, and of course, that includes text communications as well. A chance, as I said earlier, this kind of falls into the purpose test. If you, if you just meet folks incidentally at a social or chance gathering and there's no intent to avoid the open meeting law, you know, that's, that's not a, that's not a violation. I'll mention briefly closed session. So when there is a noticed meeting like this, and the public has a right to be here and, and to see what's happening, as a general rule, we need to be in open session. There, there are certain legal bases that allow for you to meet in closed session. And if we know we're going to be meeting in closed session, we, we need to give advanced notice that we're going to be doing that or that we may be doing that. The council has to approve meeting in closed session. There has to be a vote taken, a rule call vote taken on that. It is also possible for there to be a spontaneous closed session at a meeting, even if notice hasn't been given, if the council recognizes during the course of meeting that there's a need to discuss something privately and there's a lawful basis to do so, you can do that, as long as the council approves it. But there is a limitation there. If you choose to do that during a meeting and hasn't been given notice, haven't given notice in advance, you cannot then go back into open session and meet once we've gone into closed session under those circumstances. That, that's the last thing that you can do is, is do that closed session discussion. So let me stop there. There are a couple of articles attached, and let me just stop. Is there, is there anyone who has any questions about the open meetings law or we go on? Yes, sir?
I have one. I'm new to the council, and I am often looking for either advice or a historical perspective on things from other alders who have either been in Stoughton longer or have been part of this council longer. If I'm seeking out information from one of them, what's the best way to do that to avoid any sort of ethics violation?
Yeah. So, great question. You can do so outside the context of a, a noticed meeting so long as you're not violating the numbers test. So if you have a specific question about something and, and you think a particular alder might be able to give you some information that's helpful about that, you can have that conversation. There's only two people having the conversation. You're not, you know, you don't meet the numbers test. So as long, now, if you start having enough conversations, you might get to the numbers test and say, well, now I've spoken with enough people. So if it's, if it's about the same thing and it's about this thing that's on the agenda next week and I want their perspective on it, that's when you cross the line. And then, of course, at any, at any meeting that's noticed, if there's a, like tonight, if there's something where you'd like to ask whether anyone can give you some historical information that will help you understand the issue better, of course, you can do it at a meeting. And then staff is another good resource. You can meet with city staff to understand, you know, how, how has the city, you know, handled this issue traditionally or, or how does this work and so on? And you can meet with staff anytime without having to worry about the open meetings law because staff, you know, we don't get a vote here. So we're a resource and, and the planning department and the police department, public works, they're all available, you know, to serve as a resource. Does that make sense?
Yeah.
Yep. You know, there's something else that, I haven't done this yet and I meant to. The city attorney's office in Madison was asked about the training that they knew, they do for their new folks. And he sent something out where they decided to have, instead of doing this kind of a presentation at a meeting or some other presentation at a meeting, they had each of their department heads put together training materials that are going to be, and they're going to post them online for members of their council so that they can look at it at their leisure when they want. And I mean to look at that stuff and take a look at it. And if it looks like it might be of interest to you all, I'll just let the city folks here know and make it available to you. And if it looks like maybe it's something that we should do in the future, something more like that than what this is, then, you know, we can maybe do that in the future. Because this is just a limited presentation about certain things. What they do in Madison is each department will provide information about, this is what our department does. This is how, and this is what you might be interested in, and this is how you could communicate with us and stuff like that. Okay? Yeah?
Tom, this is just a corollary off of what Jonathan was talking about. If he's just seeking maybe not necessarily advice, but like historical perspective, but if we're only saying things to him that would be from publicly available records, are those, would that still be considered a violation if it's publicly available information?
If, if you, if you meet the numbers test and the, and the purpose, and, and the subject matter that you're discussing is something that's, you know, relevant to some issue either pending before the city now or that may be coming before the city, then you, even if it's publicly available, you have to add, you, you might, you might be now violating the open meetings law. If, you know, if you, if we get six or seven members of the council together to, to have a conversation about historical information, you know, that, that starts, I'm, I'm asking, why are we doing it this way? We should, we should notice this up as a meeting. Okay. Any other questions about that?
A couple of things. There is some training available through some of our trade associations. I think I might have sent out the one. If not, I can resend it if you're available to go. And it's not only a great opportunity to learn, but it's a good opportunity to collaborate with other newly elected officials. You might find that beneficial. I wanted to ask Attorney Dregney about social media, your, one of your favorite things to discuss.
Yeah, we could talk about social media right now. What's your question?
Well, I know we have a policy because you drafted it, but just maybe some word of advice as far as council members engaging in conversations on social media.
Yeah, well, it's, it can be like email if, if what's, if it's being used in a way that is facilitating, you know, communication among members of the council or committee members, and we meet the numbers test and we meet the purpose test, we have the same problem, whether it's email or Facebook, right? So you do have to be mindful of the open meetings law in the context of social media. I also think it's a good idea for anyone who is considering, well, you should all understand the city's social media policy. You all are welcome to have your own social media platforms that you use for your own personal and private interests. Be aware that if you start using your personal social media platform to, to, in a way where you're, you're expressing now views and, and engaging in dialogue on matters that are coming before the city, you can, you can convert your private social media platform into a public forum that now is treated differently from a legal standpoint, both in terms of you having to allow other people to post things and, and access to your Facebook account or whatever social media you're using. You can't cut people off. If you allow, if you start using your own social media account as a platform, as an elected official to kind of do official kind of communications with your constituents, that you can cross the line and that can be a, that can now become a public forum. So be aware of that. The city has adopted a policy that governs the use of, that governs official city sponsored social media. And so if there's anyone interested in knowing what, what that is, how it works, what social media the city is using, you know, we have a policy on that and we can, you can talk to staff about what's being used and how it's being used. I'm actually not currently up to speed on what we're doing, other than I know that we have a, we have a website that the clerk manages. Police department, I think, has a Facebook page. I don't know what other official media accounts, if any, are currently being used, but...
Many.
Many?
Many, yeah. But they all operate under the social media policy. And, you know, one of my concerns with it is record retention, you know, especially if it's a site that we're not controlling and we engage in a, in a forum because we do have to retain records, right?
Yeah, I mean, that's part of the challenge with a, a government-sponsored social media platform. You, as a, an elected official, if you have public records, you have an obligation to retain those for minimum retention periods. And so for the social media platforms that the city sponsors, we pay a service to maintain and retain those records so that we have them for the legally required period before they're disposed of. And so, yeah, we need to be mindful about using social media. And again, if it's your own personal social media page, fine. But if you're interested in, like, you know, how can I use this as a, an elected official to communicate with my constituents? That's when I think you should have a conversation with the appropriate staff, our IT department, the mayor, you know, me if necessary to say, okay, what do we, how can I do this? Good point, Tim.
Yeah, and I would say the record retention is a lot easier than it used to be back in the day, and Greg probably remembers, everything was paper. All the things that are in your packet were printed and you had to retain that stuff for seven years. So we had like boxes full of stuff in the basements of everyone's homes that served. And every year after a while, you could just throw away one box and it was, we went through a lot of trees back in the day. So the electronic packets certainly are, are helpful. So anything else that you had?
Well, I just thought I would touch on a couple of other things that particularly for new members, and I'm looking in my outline here. On parliamentary procedure, what I, what I want to make sure people understand is that the city council has adopted rules of procedure, parliamentary procedure. Those are not the only rules that you, that could come into play that discuss or that govern how meetings are conducted, for example. But I think if you look at the city council rules, that will give you a good understanding of, for example, what, what do the rules say about how you as a member of the council could introduce a new matter of business that you're interested in and have that be something that the city considers? Well, those rules give you some direction on how you might do that. The, that, that's the main thing, I think, that I, I'd just say, take a look at the rules, familiarize yourself with them. Meetings are conducted in accordance with those rules and Robert's Rules of Order. And again, if you need, we have on occasion fielded calls from alders who are interested in, you know, well, I'd like to bring this up at a meeting or I'd like this council to consider this issue. How do we do that? You know, if you're not sure and you want help, again, staff can provide some, some help to you in understanding how you can do that. I'm not going to cover the public records law in detail because frankly, and as the mayor indicated, that now is by and large handled by city staff for you all. They don't, don't tend to be issues that you need to be concerned about, except I would say with the caveat that if you're using your own personal, you should not use your own personal email addresses to do city business. Use, you all have city email accounts. Use those. If we do, if we ever get a public records request where we need to determine whether members of the council have engaged in email communications about something, we like to be able to just do a search on our server and not have to go to you individually and say, you need to search, search your own personal email account or, you know, your email is subject to search. Just use your city email account from a, for public communications and doing public business. It'll, it'll make your life a lot easier in terms of the public records law.
One thing I would just add, if somebody sends you an email for city business on your personal email account, just forward it to your city email account and then you'll have it there.
Correct. And good point. And, and ask people in the future to use your city email account. Finally, ethics. So the sources of law governing ethics for local public officials and in, in particular in the city of Stoughton are, we have, we have several things to look at. One, in our section two dash two of the Code of Ordinances, we have some ethical rules. They kind of correspond to section 19.59 of the Wisconsin statutes. The basic things to be concerned about when it comes to ethics are not using, you know, your office to obtain anything of substantial value for, for your own personal benefit or for your family's benefit or for the benefit of an organization that you're associated with. There are some, there are some precise definitions in terms of what does immediate family mean? What does an organization with which you are associated mean? And that can get a little complicated. If you ever have a question or a concern about that, you have the opportunity to get advice from the city attorney's office. If you are concerned about a conflict of interest issue, whether you can take action on a matter because you are concerned that perhaps you have an actual or a perceived conflict of interest and you want an opinion, for example, you can request that from the city attorney's office. The rules are that you have to provide all of the facts that are relevant to the issue and to the question. I like that to be in writing, so I've got a record of it, and then I can provide a legal opinion on the issue. That legal opinion is something that this law says that I'm required to keep confidential and not share with the rest of the world unless the person who's asked for it either makes it public or makes statements or representations about the issue or what the legal advice has been that may not be tracking with what the legal advice actually was. And then, and then, you know, then I have the obligation to, or at least the ability to make that available. So, but I've done it many times. People have asked me for my opinion. In most cases, it's just a simple conversation on the telephone, and in some cases, the person will ask for a formal legal opinion. And when they have that, then the law says that if you follow such an opinion, that's considered prima facie evidence of a, of an intent to comply with, with the law. So there can be close calls from some time to time and cases where people would like an opinion and, and that's something you can ask for. And I think that's probably enough watching paint dry for one night.
Are there any questions for the city attorney or comments? All right, hearing none. While I queue up the next item, wanted to remind everyone that in 10 days Sentinels My starts, so we hope to see everybody out and about. There are some volunteer opportunities available. If that's something you'd like to do, you can contact the chamber. They will gladly accept help. First order of business tonight would be our consent agenda. There is multiple items on the consent agenda. I would entertain a motion for approval.
No moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Alder Person Reeves. Would anybody like anything on the consent agenda acted on separately? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
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 And any opposed? None opposed. That motion carries. All business, first one is ordinance 12 of 2023. This is a second reading that came out of the Public Safety Committee, and I believe the chairperson is Alder Person Jensen.
Thank you. You have to get used to that. Oh, let's see, I got a recall up. That's not the right one. Yeah, let me find it. I'll just go off the agenda. This is ordinance 12, 2023, revision to section 50 dash four, Stoughton Municipal Code, and I would move for approval.
Second.
Second was Alder Legaki.
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Is there any discussion on this? This is the one that we refer to as the graffiti addition.
Yep, just simply for additional graffiti, graffiti to the ordinance.
Hearing no questions, all in favor, say aye.
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 And any opposed? None opposed, that motion carries. Ordinance 13 is coming from the landmarks. Who would like the honors tonight? Alder Person Reeves.
Ordinance 13 of 2023, establishing a local historic downtown district. Landmarks Commission recommends approval 6-0, and I so move.
Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Alder Person Legaki. Alder Person Reeves.
So we've talked about this at length, and Todd Hubing from the Landmarks Commission, who has been chairing the committees also here, or commission. The only thing I was... The only thing I would like to add since our last meeting, I took a look at our City of Stoughton homepage. And on the front, it says, welcome to beautiful and historic Stoughton. I also looked at Visit Stoughton and it says, right on the front, where history lives and art redefines. I think it's, you know, we've talked a lot about our historic downtown. But as a city, we really promote and celebrate our history. It's part of our identity. And I think Alder Schumacher mentioned in the last meeting that the guidelines, in his view, would help lessen, let me know if I'm incorrect on this, the subjectivity of the planning commission and leaves the heavy lifting in the hands of the Landmarks Commission, who has the expertise and knowledge-based review projects. That's a little, you know, opinion. But I, I agree with that. I think, you know, a lot of the people have spoken more eloquently than I have about the matter. But I just think it's, it's not something we want to take for granted. And it just mean, it seems to make a lot of sense to leave the, the decision-making and the review, project review to the Landmarks Commission, who really just has the knowledge base. So I hope you'll support the, or the ordinance.
Okay, thank you. Any questions or comments? Alder Person Jensen.
Yes, I do not doubt that the Landmarks Committee has the expertise. I know that I sat on that committee for four years, I believe it was. Sat on there for at least one year when I was on council and two years, three years as a citizen. Also, I, there are two buildings within this district that were built by my grandfather. So I have a, an interest in the history of this community. I've been here a long, long time, all my life. However, I still have two very distinct issues with this ordinance and that is why I'm going to be voting against it. The first is the idea that we're, we have, we're going to be transferring authority from Planning Commission, an elected body, to a virtually unelected body, one, one person in it. And I don't agree with that. I think that that is, that's just wrong with that because the Planning Commission has four elected officials on it and three citizens. Where the Landmarks has one person, there is no accountability to be there through election. So that, that is a problem for me. The other is the idea that we're metaphorically throwing a security blanket over downtown. And what this is doing would, it would create an issue where all of the landowners, all of the homeowners would be put into the same box and whether they wanted to be there or not. And that also is a problem for me. It just smacks of being undemocratic. And although I, you know, I am all for the history of this community, I'm all for maintaining the guidelines which are there and would be in place whether they're, whether this passes or not. It just, those two reasons just make me feel that this ordinance is just not what we need to do.
Anybody else have any questions?
Aye.
Any opposed?
No.
One opposed, that motion carries. Our next item is R 70 of 2023. And this one comes from the Finance Committee, which is Alder Person Schumacher.
I think I got the next five of them too.
All right, make them quick, will you? There's people waiting.
No problem, no problem. This is R 70 of 2023, resolution to amend the 2023 adopted budget to approve ARPA funds to the Stoughton Neighborhood Free Health Clinic. So moved.
Is there a second?
A second.
Second by President Hirsch.
We talked about this in Finance and also in Committee of the Whole. Both of those had unanimous decisions in there. And this is just to get some of the ARPA dollars to that organization.
All right, we do have a couple of members of the organization here. If anybody has any questions for them. All right, well, I would just want to say, we certainly appreciate the work that you do, especially through the pandemic. I know that was difficult for everybody and we're pleased that we're, we're able to, to help your cause. Any questions from Alders? If not, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And any opposed? None opposed, that motion carries. Next item is R 71, and this one also came from Finance.
All right, R 71 of 2023 is a resolution to amend the 2023 adopted budget to approve ARPA funds to the Stoughton Area Resource Team Incorporated, also known as the START. And I so move.
Second.
Second by Alder Person Reeves.
Again, this one came through Finance and also Committee of the Whole. Both were unanimous decisions to get these fund, ARPA funds to that organization, $25,000.
All right, and I believe that everybody received the email from, from START. Hopefully all the questions that you had were answered.
Yep, thank you.
Okay, any questions or comments on this one? Hearing none, all in favor, the motion say aye.
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 Sorry, we're not getting the room audio in through online, at least not very well.
You can't hear us? You're having difficulty hearing us?
You're kind of cutting out a couple of times, I hear you now.
Okay, sorry about that. Just let me know if it continues. We can adjust our microphones a little bit closer maybe. All right, were there any opposed to this? None opposed, that motion does carry. Next item, R 72.
All right, R 72 of 2023 is a resolution to amend the 2023 adopted budget to approve ARPA funds for the creation of a business revolving loan fund. So moved.
Second.
Second by President Hirsch.
Same thing, we talked about this in both Finance and at Committee of the Whole, of which those were both unanimous decisions to appropriate for the creation of this revolving loan fund, $200,000.
Any questions or comments on this one?
I have a question. Dave, once this is approved, we have to work with WIBIC? And then how soon are we going to announce it? And do we have like something planned to announce it for all the businesses in Stoughton so they know that this is going to happen?
Well, no discussion took place and I haven't even really thought about that yet. Yeah, I can certainly contact WIBIC. They're aware of that we're going to be doing this. But the mayor and I would have to talk about how we want to advertise it. I think the redevelopment authority is interested in kind of advertising or re-advertising their revolving loan program also. So we'll have to get back to you on a plan per se. But the mayor and I have not discussed any advertising or anything on this.
Thank you.
Alder Person Reeves.
And I also got to thinking about, are we going to be setting up parameters? Because our, our guidelines as opposed to what WIBIC might have. I mean, I guess they're going to need some guidelines as far as who would qualify in that, right?
My understanding is that discussion at Committee of the Whole was that the loan guidelines would be modeled after the revolving loan program that the RDA has.
Okay, and then just expand the perimeter?
Correct, instead of being limited to half mile outside of TIF number four, it's within the city limits, whatever those city limits are.
Sounds good, thanks.
You're welcome.
Any other questions or comments? We can certainly, if you'd like, we can kind of put together an outline and a plan and maybe bring it to Finance or something if you think that would be helpful. That way you'll all see it in a packet. I can share the experience with, originally with the revolving loan fund with the RDA. There was kind of a marketing effort and a lot of that went through the chamber. I think they did a presentation at one of the meetings. Certainly we will work with them, but it's not just limited to chamber members. So we'd also want to be able to, to reach out to the other businesses here in Stoughton. So we can certainly work on that. And I can see from WIBIC what their experience has been. Maybe they have some ideas as well.
Thank you, that would be great.
Okay, so we have a motion and second. We haven't voted on this one yet, right? Okay, any other comments? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And any opposed? None opposed, that motion carries. Next item is R 72.
73, you were on.
73.
Yep. R 73 of 2023 is a resolution to amend the 2023 adopted budget to approve ARPA funds for the tablet and laptop lending project. So moved.
Is there a second?
Second, this is fantastic.
All right, second by Alder Person Legaki. Alder Person Schumacher.
This had been discussed in Finance and Committee of the Whole. Both were unanimous decisions on the $2,000 ARPA funds and this one would be run through the senior center.
All right, and this one was kind of one that was initiated with former Alder Tokowski. And just so you know, we did have a follow-up meeting with Alder Tokowski, our IT department, and then a gentleman that's working for a IT company that has been contracted with Dane County Cities and Villages, which we're a member of. We're expecting some, some follow-up from, from that gentleman about some of the options we may have to do more, you know, broadband type service in our community. So I want to at least let you know while we're having this discussion that we're not, we're not finished working with Joyce yet. President Hirsch.
I thought during the Committee of the Whole that we actually designated $3,000 to this, not 2,000. And I'm trying to find my notes.
If you give me a couple of minutes, I'll look up the minutes. Give me a couple of minutes to look up the minutes, please.
And I know your notes are better than mine, so not going to doubt you.
Yeah, because I think the original proposal was 2,500 and then we just bumped it up to 3,000. And I'm trying to find my notes.
I got 2,000 in my notes.
You have three?
Two.
Two?
The draft minutes also reflect 2,000.
2,000, okay. Never mind.
So two it is, I mean, we can always, you know, see how the program goes and come back and have another discussion if we need more. Any other questions or comments on this one? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And any opposed? None opposed, that motion carries. R 74 is the next one.
R 74 of 2023 is a resolution to amend the 2023 adopted budget for Troll Beach inflatable play structures. So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Alder Person Jensen.
As a change, these are not ARPA dollar ones. These would be general, or unassigned fund balance transfer to cover the costs of those inflatable play structures. This had usually been done with a sinking fund, but we weren't supposed to have sinking funds for such things, so.
Anything you want to add, Director Elier?
Not for myself. Director Glenn is available via Zoom if you do have any questions.
Anything you'd like to add, Director Glenn?
There's nothing really else to add. There's just replacement inflatables for the ones we have now. And the way our season ends, it ends after what the budget season, so that's why the sinking fund worked. But we'll have to figure out a new way to do it this year.
Yeah, I think it's kind of unpredictable on when you need to replace them.
Right, some, some last a year and some, you know, last a 10 years. So it's hard to say which ones are going to last or not.
Any questions or comments? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries. R 75 is the next one.
All right, R 75 of 2023 is a resolution to amend the 2023 adopted budget for Virgin Lake Trail construction. So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Alder Person Reeves. Alder Person Schumacher.
Uh, this was through Finance and Parks and Rec with unanimous decisions. This would increase expenditures by a little over $203,000 based on engineering estimates and costs, or revised costs, I mean.
All right, anything you want to add, Director Glenn?
Um, yeah, the initial budget numbers, there were, you know, before the engineering was completed, these numbers are the opinions of probable construction cost after the engineering was completed. There's a couple changes that affected the costs significantly. One was MSA, they've been seeing $90 a ton for asphalt pricing instead of 70. That was the original line. Sometimes you do see 70 in road projects. But for a trail project like this, they thought 90 would be much more reasonable number to expect. And then there's addition of guard rails and just based on the alignment of the trail and some of the, the small shoulder, or the way the shoulders are on the trail too. So those were added. But those are the two major components to the cost increase. And the, the third thing I like to note is that segment A and C, which you could see Buckingham to Roby and then the, the Roby to 51 West cost, they were flipped. And we've been using segment A, B, and C instead of the road names. And MSA gave, you know, they had it flipped in the way they named them. So that's why those costs are way off in those two.
All right, any questions or comments on this one?
I have one question. Can you explain the contingency line item? Is that just for, if it goes over budget, that we have a little extra? Or what is that for?
Sure, so contingency is needed. This is, so when they're, the contractor is doing construction, you know, we might have some poor soils they encounter and it's adding some extra base material. That's the, the main reason for that contingency number. So it's unexpected cost during construction.
Any other questions or comments? Hearing none, all in favor of the resolution, say aye.
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 Any opposed? That motion carries. Next item is a time-sensitive one. This one came to us, I think at one point it was in Park and Rec Department and it went back and forth with the Clerk Department. Would somebody like to introduce this one? It never did make it to Public Safety because by the time we received all the material, we missed the deadline.
Do you want me to present?
Yeah, if you could.
Okay. This is Resolution 75 dash 2023, excuse me, wrong one. 76 dash This is Resolution 75-2023, excuse me, wrong one, 76-2023, authorizing and directing to proper city officials to issue a temporary Class B fermented malt beverage license and special event license to Emmy Danish Madison Revolution Inc. for the event Revolution Rumble softball tournament to be held on June 3rd through June 4th, 2023, and I'd move for approval.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay.
Yeah, this, like you said, was tossed around for a while, and by the time we, it came to my attention, it was, it was too late to get into last month's meeting, and we weren't able to make connections to get it into this month's meeting in time for Candy to make the license. Well, actually, I think I'll let Candy address that a little bit further, if you're there, Candy, if you're willing to.
Yeah, this one started out back in February, I believe, at Hart, and then I made the connection with Tony that we also needed to issue the class, or the temporary license and special event. So by the time the group got their connections together and the application submitted, it all came together last week, so we really weren't going to make public safety and council in time for them to hold their event, June 3rd and June 4th, so.
One of the things we're going to look at is our special event application process. I know I talked to Candy today, I sent Dan out an email this afternoon, we're going to try to get together and figure out a way to streamline the process and the expectations, and, you know, it's, there's a fair amount of paperwork that is involved with this, but we have some pretty good examples. The Chamber does a lot of special events, they have it down to a science. We would certainly probably work with them on things that they think we could do to help streamline the process for future events. We certainly want to encourage more events, but we also have to make sure that, especially that when they have alcohol involved, that, you know, there's the proper paperwork, the maps, best practices, things like that are included, so everybody knows ahead of time what the expectations are and what the lead time would be in order for us to get approval. This particular group here, I know there's players from Stoughton that participate in this league. I think there was in the past maybe kind of a local club team here, and some of the players that have had to go to Madison because we weren't able to sustain the league here locally, but it'll also attract other folks in from other communities, which is always a good thing. So, you know, like I said, we do want to encourage, you know, more events, but there is a process to go through, and sometimes during the transition, not everybody understands what that looks like, so we're going to see if we can help them through that process. Anything I missed, Candy?
Well, that was really about it.
Okay, any questions or comments from Alders on this one? All right, hearing none, all in favor of the motion, say aye.
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 And any opposed? That motion carries. All right, now the moment we've all been waiting for, another attorney joins us. We have a couple items on here, and I know there's a little bit of background, a lot of work was done at the Public Safety Committee, we had multiple presentations. At one point, I think we had a first reading here, there was some additional work that was done, which the city attorneys can highlight, and we decided to kind of bring it back for a first reading. We wanted both parts, the ordinance and the resolution, to come back together, I think was one of our goals. So here we are tonight, so Attorney Dregney, who's going to walk us through this thing?
Yeah, Derek Pudge is going to do it. I looked a couple minutes ago, and I saw that he was, his name was up there, but I don't see him. Derek, are you?
He ghosted you?
There he is.
I'm here, I wouldn't leave Matt hanging today.
Okay, good, thanks. We're going to let Derek handle this.
Sure, and so for those who are new, I'm an attorney at Stafford Rosenbaum, who along with City Attorney Matt Dregney provides legal counsel to the city. Just for a brief recap, over the last several months, we've been working extensively with the Public Safety Committee to address some questions regarding the background law and procedural questions related to the issuance of these alcohol beverage operators license, and for those of you who don't know, a person has to have an operator's license in general to serve or sell alcohol beverages in licensed establishment. So as a result of this work, the committee made two major recommendations to the council, which are before you tonight. One is an ordinance, and under that ordinance change, the operator's license would be issued without the approval of the city council. I noticed that earlier on the consent agenda tonight, there were a number of operator's licenses that were being approved. If this ordinance is approved, that would authorize the city clerk to actually issue the license if the background investigation report prepared by the chief of police contains no violations. If that report contains any violations, the approval of the Public Safety Committee would be required before the city clerk may issue the license. So the first part of this, again, changes the process, it no longer goes to city council, and then if there are, what we call it, no red flags associated with that background investigation, the Public Safety Committee would have to weigh in, they would generally bring in the applicant, interview them, discuss this issue, and there are certain findings that they have to make. And along with that, the committee recommended a policy change, this is the resolution that's before you, and that policy has two procedural components, I'm sorry, it has two main components. One is a procedural component that essentially outlines each step in the process from the application to decision and appeal, and it identifies each of the parties' responsibilities so that the clerk knows what the clerk's responsibilities are, the police chief knows what the police chief's responsibilities are, the committee knows what the committee's responsibilities are. The second component of that policy, if you recall, is a screening component that would limit the type of information that a background investigation report would contain. The goal of this was to essentially sift and winnow out the things that either, under state law, the committee could not consider, or the city could not consider, as well as records of offenses that are unlikely to be substantially related. As you recall, we had a long conversation about, the only types of arrest and conviction records that could be considered are those that are ultimately substantially related to the work of being a licensed bartender. So on March 2nd, we presented those changes to the Committee of the Whole, which unanimously approved that ordinance and resolution, subject to a few minor revisions which we made. But as we made those revisions, Matt and I identified some additional changes that should be made at Chapter 14. Those primarily involve general licensing provisions under Section 1, they weren't really provisions, substantive provisions related to operator's license, but some of those provisions were either redundant or unclear, or just didn't reflect the current practice. I know that there was a lot of hay that was made about one section that stated the chief of police shall institute such investigation of the applicant's business and moral character as he deems necessary for the protection of the public good. We flagged that, that was flagged as problematic at the Committee of the Whole meeting, and so that was one of the things we wanted to change, and so we essentially restructured Article 1 of Chapter 14, just to make it a little bit more consistent, eliminate some of those duplicative requirements. And so rather than, I don't think it makes sense to go through each of those, but if you have questions about that, the ordinance for you tonight includes the proposal related to the operator's licenses that were recommended by the Public Safety Committee and the Committee of the Whole, as well as those additional changes we recommended, so we can discuss those each individually, or if there are any questions on, first, just the ordinance itself, we can talk about that at this time.
And then procedurally, Matt, do I have to have the first reading introduced?
So this, we decided to put the ordinance back on for, or on for a first reading because I think we had a first reading previously, but then we've made some additional changes to the ordinance that this is the first time the council is seeing them. They aren't particularly substantive, but they are new. So the choices tonight are either to simply have the first reading on the ordinance, and then we won't take action on the resolution tonight, that'll be tabled until the next meeting, when you can have the second reading and adopt the ordinance, and then you can take action on the resolution. That would be one option. The other option, if the council feels that it's ready to proceed tonight, it could suspend the rules and have both the first and second reading on the ordinance tonight, adopt the ordinance tonight, and then go ahead and act on the resolution. So both of those options are available.
All right. Thank you for that explanation. Does anybody have any initial thoughts? I know there's a fair amount of material there, but some of it you've seen versions of in the past, so I'd leave that up to you. From Candy, from a clerk's perspective, do you consider this time-sensitive, or what's your view on this?
I do not. You know, we're going through all the renewal processes right now with the establishments, but this is more operator-related, so it, we can implement it whenever the council chooses to go forward with it, if they do.
Okay, thank you. Okay, Alder Person Reeves, and then President Hirsch.
What is a cabaret license?
I'll let the clerk answer that, even though I think I kind of know. Go ahead, Candy.
That is a, for live music in establishments?
And a follow-up question, which is, I don't know how I was envisioning a cabaret, but could somebody open a gentleman's club in Stoughton? Do we have an ordinance against that?
I believe we do have an ordinance.
Yes, I believe we do have an ordinance. I was looking through that on the weekend, and I cannot remember what it was, but it was under, oh God, what was it? Oh, I'm sorry, but there's something in there.
It might have been Vizzoni. It seems like.
I think it's under 50. Wouldn't it be, Matt?
I didn't know this was going to be on the test.
I didn't think so either.
So I have not researched that issue. I'm not up on either cabarets or gentleman's clubs for tonight.
I guess that would just be a side note, just to make sure that.
If I remember right, what I was reading is that there were, there was an ordinance in there, but it stipulated what could or could not be done. I don't think it said that you, it was prohibited.
I think we could certainly look at it, as long as it's not a conditional use permit, that's all I have to say about it.
Yeah.
Mr. Mayor, if I can jump in real quick, this is Derek again.
Yeah, please do.
Under Chapter 14, and I don't, to the best of my recollection, we didn't make any changes to this because there's nothing related to those general provisions that we're making, but there is a license for the, I apologize, sexually oriented businesses, under, say, under Chapter 14. And I would guess that would fall under that.
President Hirsch.
I guess because it's not time-sensitive, I would like one more chance to read through this. I had a couple of questions, and now I can't find what I had flagged, so I'd like another week to find what I had flagged.
Sure, and that's fine. Do we have to formally introduce it as a first reading then?
Yes.
I think the appropriate action is to waive the first reading. Technically speaking, that's.
Just do the first reading and then table the resolution.
Well, it's just on the agenda for a first reading, so this is kind of one of those parliamentary works.
You know, what a first reading means really is that the clerk would read the whole ordinance, but you probably don't want to listen to that, so I would simply move to waive the first reading, and then you're done, or dispense with the reading of the ordinance, and then you're done with that, and then next meeting, we'll put it on for a second reading.
Okay.
Be like the US Senate.
Actually, I would like Candy to read the whole ordinance.
No, as you said.
You can do that if you want to stall for time.
Reclaiming my time.
All right, did you want to make a motion to, would you say dispense?
Dispense with the reading.
Well, I'll just do like we normally do and just read the ordinance for a first reading.
That's fine.
That works too.
Which is Ordinance 14 of 2023, an ordinance amending Chapter 14 of the City of Stoughton Municipal Code relating to the issuance of alcohol beverage, operators licenses, excuse me, first reading.
There's no action required, that's all we're doing?
No action required.
All right, so that would take us to the next item, which is R 77.
I would move to table R 77, 2023, to the next meeting.
Right.
Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Alder Mieske. No discussion on the table, all in favor, say aye.
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 And any opposed? None opposed, that motion carries.
Motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn by Jensen, is there a second?
Read your tongue.
Second.
Should we erase?
Who had the second? Alder Person Reeves had the second, all in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed? None opposed, that motion carries. Thank you.
Caught me sleeping.